All right, good evening, welcome to the September tenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting of Manchester Town Council. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, and the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, where we stand, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First order of business, approval of the August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen minutes. Everybody has a copy? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, report, receipt of the July two thousand and nineteen treasures report. Copy of that, any additions, corrections, comments to the treasures report from July?
I'll make a motion we've received the July two thousand and nineteen treasure report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and they should also have the check register from August, the treasures report to follow, hopefully next month, if you have a motion to receive the check register.
I'll make a motion that we've received the August two thousand and nineteen check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, mayor's report. Water bills, we're having some changes to the water bills, but most of them will affect only a few people, but they will be mailed by October first. Yard waste pickup will continue on Fridays through November thirtieth. We continue to have some issues with yard waste pickup, so there's a couple reminders here, they can see, grass clippings, leaves, small branches, not in excess of three feet or four inches diameter. Branches must be bundled and armed for load, so if you have like a pile of six feet high, there's a couple different drivers from Hughes that they go through, they may tag it and not pick it up, so please get those in a pile where the guys can get down, pick that thing up, get it into the truck. Yard waste should not be mixed in, such as malt, mulch, dirt, any trash, including pet waste. Residents should place lawn waste curbside on Thursday evenings, they do get started pretty early on Friday, so they can continue with their regular Friday routine. Also, please place these in craft paper bags or a container, such as a trash can or something, it's pretty obvious that it's yard waste. Again, no plastic bags, if you see plastic bags, they're gonna pass by, because they can't put those plastic bags into the yard waste. Brush pickup on Tuesday, October fifteenth, this is done by the town staff as opposed to the Hughes that we contract for. A few different rules, because we use a chipper and they use a truck to bring stuff out. Shrubbery cuttings and tree trimmings cannot exceed four inches diameter again, shrubbery cuttings and tree trimmings should not exceed eight feet in length. The cuttings and tree trimming piles should not exceed the following dimensions, four feet high, it's gonna be a little bit bigger than arm length, four feet in width and eight feet in length. Place the cut into the brush and the tree trimmings towards the curb. And one pile, you know, per household or per property, just not bringing stuff in. Again, these are, there are guys doing it, we're doing this as a service to the community, so please work with us to help get those guys as efficient as possible. The next bulk trash pickup is Wednesday, October sixteenth. If you have something that's on the list, please call Hughes, they can give you instructions. Again, if it's like a refrigerator, things, they're gonna give you instructions for the refrigerator, and that will go pretty smoothly if you follow those instructions. Last thing I have, school has started, so you've probably noticed that there's kids out, and all of our streets have sidewalks, please take extra care in driving through the communities early in the morning and on your way back in the afternoon. Some of the schools don't get back until four thirty, quarter to five even, so there are kids walking in the streets, waiting at bus stops, those sort of things, so please take care, and our police are out on a pretty consistent basis, trying to monitor the areas as best we can. That's all I have, and I'll turn it over here for the town administrator report.
Good evening, mayor and council members of the community. We'll review the August twenty nineteen administration report under pending items, the Sheets project. Sheets operation takes over the site on September nineteenth, and opening day is scheduled for September twenty sixth. I think we all can be proud of the way that project has turned out down there. The packaged goods store, I estimate that project to be about eighty percent complete. The opioid litigation, I supplied everyone today with our town attorney's response to that, and that is on the agenda later on in this evening. Tree harvesting on town property, our attorney advised us not to sole source this project out, and the contractor was notified as such. The Lippi property annexation, at the direction of the mayor, I'm organizing a workshop with the mayor and council, the planning zoning board, police, fire, and DPW to discuss the possible annexation of this piece of property. Site security at town facilities, chief Hess and I are working on this. Since the incident in Tontytown, we're taking a hard look at some of our facilities, and we'll get back to you later on about that. Under code enforcement, you will be emailed our monthly report. Also, I have a court case scheduled for September twenty seventh, this is in regards to untagged vehicles that are residents. Also, we have no movement on the Ruhrball or Dowsh properties in regards to the violation at those two properties. The Ruhrball property, we're actually waiting for their attorney to get back to us, the Dowsh property is in the hands of our attorney, and he has to reach out to Mr. Dowsh with the issues that's going on down there. Under miscellaneous items, the Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Facility retrofit project, the additional property is being settled on. Meeting with the design firm and county reps in regards to this project is scheduled for September eighteenth. I did attend the M.D.A. pre-tour meeting on Friday, September sixth. I believe councilperson Howe is going to be attending the tour meeting, which is scheduled for September twenty sixth at one thirty in the Reagan Room at the county office building. We're currently putting together our solid waste recycling bid package, that should be out on the street within the next month or so. Also, we're still waiting confirmation in regards to Manchester's recertification as a sustainable community. I wanted to schedule an S.C. community work group meeting sometime in, over the next month or so, but I wanna wait to make sure that our recertification is in place. You'll probably hear a little bit about that at the fall MML conference, because that's when they like to announce those, so you may hear our name announced at that. Staff did participate in a residential stormwater management workshop that was sponsored by the county environmental advisory council this past Saturday. The Manchester Valley High School homecoming parade is scheduled for September twenty seventh. The Manchester Events Committee is currently planning a Fall Fest on October twelfth, and one thing that you don't see on there, but I sent that out late today, was we have our first MVHS advisory committee meeting on Monday, September the sixteenth at seven P.M. That's in the media center of the high school. It's very interesting, I've been attending those meetings for many, many years, guy Gary is going in as chairperson of that committee, and I'm very, very happy to serve on that committee, so if anybody's interested in joining us, it'd be great, I think it's a pretty good experience. That's it for me, any questions?
Skeet, how close are we to the cutoff that we gave for the Ruhrballs? I think we gave them sixty days?
Yes, their attorney asked for sixty to ninety days. An email went out from our attorney, I believe it was yesterday, in regards to, hey, what's the status? Give us an update.
You've got a good response on available dates for the workshop?
I am. One thing that we may do, chairperson of the P&amp;Z board, Mr. Paracone, brought up a very good point. We may be able to hold that workshop on the third Tuesday of October, that's the regularly scheduled P&amp;Z board meeting. If the agenda is light, and we can cancel that P&amp;Z meeting, we may be able to do that workshop that evening, but I will get out to everybody on that, so we have to, just have to see how things work out for us.
Stephen, I know we talked last meeting about the harvesting of the trees and possibly sole sourcing that, we looked into it, determined it's not the right path for us to go down. Any thoughts on putting out to bid, or do you wanna, is your recommendation to sit on this for a little bit and then consider?
I'd like to sit on it for a short amount of time, because we have areas that the town owns that does need harvesting, and if we put together a package, we would have to hire a forester to come in and mark the trees, they would basically help us with a bid package, put the bid out, and then go from there. So, the sole sourcing of this gentleman would have taken care of all that, but of course, we were advised not to, because it doesn't matter whether it's a tree or it's a chair, we have to put it out on bid. I understand that, I get that, and I think I brought that to your attention last month.
Right.
He just reiterated that, but yes, we can do that, we're not gonna jump on it right now, but we, that's in the back of our minds.
Okay, fair enough. Any other questions for the town administrator? All right, and then to the police report, chief.
Yes, sir. So for the month of August, we responded to one hundred and eleven calls for service, thirty-four of which were outside of town, helping the other agencies. Thankfully, we investigated zero Part One crime. We did investigate one felony drug arrest, seizing heroin, cocaine, and other illegal narcotics, that's actually turned into a bigger case, the defendant is a known dealer and user in Manchester. In total, we criminally charged twelve persons for the month of August, and the breakdown is as follows. The one felony drug arrest, which began with a traffic stop, one misdemeanor drug arrest, four DWI arrests, which is extremely high for Manchester, one warrant arrest for assault, and five traffic arrests for revoked, suspended, and other related. The sheriff's office is reporting two hundred and seventy-nine overdoses year-to-date, one hundred and thirty-nine of which are heroin and fentanyl-related. There has been thirty-one fatalities, in comparison to two thousand and eighteen, running from January into now, you look into thirty-one and compare it to fifty-one, so we are heading in the right direction. There's also been a thirty-three percent decrease for the total number of overdoses during the same period of time, which is a good number. January through August of two thousand and eighteen, there was three hundred and sixty-eight total, and right now, we're at the two seventy-nine, so we're definitely heading in a good direction there. Traffic enforcement, ninety-one state citation repair orders have been issued, one hundred and eighty-one warnings for speed, stop sign, and other violations, most of them are residents. Three parking citations, and we had a total of two hundred and seventy-five violations, which is extremely high. Going back to the overdoses, Hampstead is looking at ten for year-to-date, Manchester is at five, Slakesville is at three, Tontytown is at twenty-six, Westminster is eighty-six, Mount Everest is eleven, and the rest of the numbers involved are around the surrounding towns, so that's where we are right now. Any questions?
Is there any thought of why the overdoses are down, any reason?
Oh, my personal opinion, it comes in waves. It comes in product, where the product's coming from, do they normally like to spike it up and try to sell better product to get more people to their location? There's a variety of reasons. Being optimistic, hopefully the kids and people are starting to stay away from it, you kinda hope that's the reason.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, turn it over to director of public works.
Good evening, mayor and town council. I'd like to bring your attention to the water and wastewater data report for August two thousand and nineteen. If you have any questions on that, please let me know. For the DPW report, water, we had one water leak on the private side, and that was located by Manchester field staff and repaired by the resident, and that was at thirty-two sixty-six Main Street. Two water leaks on the public side, and that was located by our staff and repaired by our staff, and that was at thirty-two hundred Main Street and three thousand five McEel Drive. We had a lightning strike and damage at our Manchester Valley Water Pump Station, and it caused extensive damage to our electronics, we had to replace a PLC, which is a programmable logic controller, two transducers, and a radio controller had to be replaced. Back in operation as of last week. For wastewater, we had zero sewer backups on the private or the public side. Our wastewater treatment plant E&amp;R upgrade optional expansion, the request for proposals were due the third of September, we had four engineering firms respond with submittals, and currently we're, they're in review with a committee that I put together, Manchester We're gonna nail, we're gonna pick one design firm, we'll, out of the four, and we're gonna pick one that's the best fit for the town of Manchester. Maintenance roads and stormwater management, the Route thirty fence repainting project began early July, and as of today, it's at a hundred percent complete. This was a huge effort, it was actually a lot more work than what we anticipated, I really gotta, I have to commend our staff. It was a lot more work than what we thought, we had to disassemble it, take it to a remote spot, pressure wash it, sand it, and spray paint it. Everybody just pitched in, got it done. It turned out really good, I don't know if you've seen it, it looks really good. The FY twenty street rehab projects, work began early August, they got a really good start, they had to pull out temporarily. The next phase of this project is the stormwater management work on Westminster Street, and that will begin next week. Once that's complete, the asphalt repairs will resume, and should be complete, will be complete, on or before October fifteenth. We had one last planned patching by our staff, and that was repairs from last year's water main breaks, and that was on York Street, thirty-three ninety-seven York Street. Parks and facilities, park maintenance and mowing is ongoing and work in progress, and lastly, at our historical center, air conditioning, we're gathering costs to have that upgraded, waiting on costs to come in on that. And that's all I have, any questions on anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to discussion of potential opioid litigation, this was, as a reminder, introduced last month. For those that are here watching, that aren't up to speed on this, met with a law firm that is representing the county. They are, are looking at litigation against opioid manufacturers and distributors. The thought process behind municipalities, county governments, those sort of things, is that they're able to join in a class action lawsuit, share in the legal expenses, which are contingent, not, we're not paying hourly for that, to recoup some of the cost of lost productivity, police, staff time, that sort of thing, involved, that's been caused by, but it says, a lot more to that, there's been several meetings in terms of looking at data points and actual cost. So this would be to engage a law firm to help us quantify what that is. So, we pass it on to our town attorney to look at the engagement letter, receive feedback, you know, there, that the town, I don't wanna quote it exactly, it's a lawyer, but the town is not taking on a risk of owing money out of pocket, which I think was at the request of this board last month going into tonight. So we're opening it up to discussion and possible vote of moving forward with that litigation, and joining with Carroll County, Howard County, I believe Somerset, maybe one more in there, don't quote me on that piece, but joining in several other Maryland municipalities and counties in that lawsuit. Anybody else have any thoughts? I tried to sum it up there as best I could.
Have we gotten any kind of, and maybe we have or have not, from the firm that has approached us? I know that they're not requiring money upfront, cost to us, but have we gotten any idea on what cost in labor type thing would be, as far as stress on our staff? Are they gonna require additional work on the police department? Are they going to need information from the fire department? Is that all going to fall back onto our staff and be the responsibility of them, or anything in regards to that? While financially, it may not be a burden to us, would it?
From an internal time allocation perspective, I think there will be some, right? I think Steve and the chief were in those meetings, I don't think it's gonna be burdensome, because they know exactly what they're looking for, most of it's gonna be budget-related, so budget, budget to actuals, that sort of thing, it's not gonna be very labor-intensive, like, we have to sit down and do walkthroughs.
They're not gonna need to know, like, exactly how many calls for this, and what the outcome was, and that kinda thing?
I think it's pretty high level.
Okay.
Yeah, because really what they're doing is pooling, as the, the population of claimants grows, they're pooling together all the information, so we wouldn't be reimbursed on this based on an actual number, it's based on averages, that's my understanding. Does they have the data already? Yeah, so they're not gonna like, you know, come in and say, well, we did eleven hundred and thirty-three calls, and someone says, no, you did eleven hundred and twenty-nine calls.
No, and I was looking more from, like, they're not gonna require us to be able to say, it's this many calls, this was the outcome of each, and...
No.
Because we know that the number that's reported to the sheriff's department is not necessarily the number that is reported through the hospital.
Yeah, and I think that, that there was a case settled in Kentucky, which you may have seen, it was in the news, and that's not how that went, that's, it's, it's aggregate global type figures, not down to the grander level of that. That's a good question. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts?
Guess one of the lingering questions I've heard is, we believe there won't be a cost to the town, but what is the potential of the cost for the town? That's just a lingering question for people.
And are we gonna be able, if we have questions, are we gonna be able to, for example, if somebody is our, whoever we choose, or whoever's gonna contact the attorney, are we gonna be able to get answers from them? I don't wanna be in a situation where we have to say, wait, we gotta call our attorney and find out, because we can't get ahold of them, like, I wanna make sure, I know they're representing us, but I wanna make sure that we can get in touch with them, it's not gonna be an untouchable if we have questions or things like that.
Yeah, again, I'm not their representative, I've only, I've probably spent in more meetings than you guys have about it, but I did talk to them today, and the indication I got was, yes, we can ask them questions, that probably doesn't make sense for all six of us to call them every morning.
No, I don't mean that, I'm just saying, if there is, if we collectively come up with some questions we have and things we need, are we gonna be able to get in touch with them, or is this gonna be an untouchable situation? Because questions are gonna come up during this, I'm quite sure.
Yeah, I think it just would probably make sense for us to work through Steve at that point, so if we, if we had questions, right, it's like, okay, well, hey, what's going on with this, what's the status, or I heard this, send that to Steve, we can send him a batch of questions, and I'm sure he'll respond. To your question, Dale, my understanding in the reading of it, and what our town attorney sent back, is that the risk to us of incurring costs is that we engage them, I'm using layman's language, we engage them, we send them down the path, they incur three or four months of internal staff time, and then we tell them, never mind. So I think when we engage them, you know, we're on that train. So that's, that's the risk, is if we decide to change your mind, because at that point, we've committed to them, they start committing ours.
But we don't pay anything anyway, unless, correct, no matter what, we don't pay anything.
Well, I think unless you change your mind halfway through, because then they would collect us.
Right, right, well, once we're in, we're in, I get that.
Yeah, once you're in, you're in, and then, no, you're not gonna throw money out of pocket. Yeah, that's my understanding.
Well, then I, I guess, how would we be losing then? I mean, what is there to...
Well, I think from a financial perspective, we don't.
Right.
So if the group's not awarded anything, let's just say it goes to court, and the group's not awarded anything.
They get nothing.
Yeah.
Have we heard anything from the other municipalities, just out of curiosity?
I haven't, but I haven't been necessarily...
I was just curious.
You'll track them.
And they're anticipating this lasting, how long?
I don't know. If I could predict that, I'd be an attorney too. I don't know. I mean, it probably could be a month, I don't...
No, I didn't know if they would say it would be, you know, within a year, five years?
We may have asked them that, but I don't know if we got, like, I think, I think they typically don't.
It's gonna be years.
Yeah.
I would think.
It'll be a while. Do we have any other thoughts, or do we have a motion? I think in order to move forward, what we would do is we would have a motion to engage, does one of you have the name of the law firm?
Oh, my goodness, I sent it. On the front.
Yeah, I can try to look at, we might have a copy of the engagement letter over there.
There it is. Theodora and Orringer, Theodora and Orringer is the main counsel, that's the one in California.
Okay.
And then Shapiro Shear, I don't know for sure if that's the one out of Baltimore or not.
Which is the one that has the engagement letter?
That's Orr, Theodora...
Theodora and Orringer?
Or Shear.
I'm sorry.
Or Pierce.
Yeah, that's a, that's a local firm, or a Maryland firm. Yeah. Yeah, do you mind passing the engagement letter? Sure. So I think, I think the motion, if the council's comfortable moving forward with this, is to engage Theodora and Orringer with respect to opioid litigation, and join with the county, the Carroll County suit, which is currently filed in circuit court. So I think that would be the motion.
Sorry, Ryan, 'cause I'm taking notes, I mean, I've heard everything you said. Hampstead, Westminster, any other, Slakesville, any local counties involved?
Westminster is not a part of this, Westminster has chosen to join as part of a national suit.
About Hampstead?
I'm not aware of what Hampstead's doing. I know that Hampstead has talked to these folks, but I don't know what they've done. It might be on their agenda tonight, I'm not sure. Curious. I know that some of the smaller ones have talked to them, I don't know, some of the smaller municipalities, I don't know what they're currently doing there. If anybody wants to see the spelling of it, if you wanna make a motion or...
I'll make a motion that we engage a law firm, Theodora and Orringer, for the purpose of opioid litigation, and join in with the Carroll County suit.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Steve had stepped out, but we'll move forward with that when he comes back. All right, next thing on our agenda is questions and comments from the community. I think we have some folks here from Mindy Drive, is there anyone here that wants, wishes to bring something up that's not Mindy Drive related, that we could do first? No, hearing none, then we'll do Mindy Drive. Mr. Kirk, I know you've been in before, you're on the top of the list, would you like to go first, again, or, since you speak for a group of people?
Ryan, mayor, can you bring your mic closer to you?
Mine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I go?
Yeah, I think you're good, is he good?
My name's Tom Kirk, twenty-five seventy-one Mindy Drive, this is my third time here, in reference to the speeding on Mindy Drive, and it just does not stop. It's just, you know, the other night, my wife and I were walking the dogs, and it was, it was dusk, and two cars, I mean, just sped by, I mean, we're like doing this, and they just drive right around you, they don't slow down, they just go. So, this is, to me and to us here, I think, something that's really, really important. So I'm not really, really sure where we are, but I, I think it should be fast-tracked somehow. We talked about the stop sign at Mindy and Patricia Court, and we also talked about, we brought the idea up of these speed enhancement, speed awareness risers, and I know someone made, had made the comment that the stop signs are, take a long time, but the risers would not, so where are we? I would like to know. We would all like to know what's going on. We just had two new families move into the street, and they both have kids, and now school's in, and it was made, the comment was made about beware of the kids and whatever with sidewalks, we do not have sidewalks, so the kids are in the street. So to me, that just enhances the necessity for this to be addressed.
So with respect to your first question, or one comment there, I just wanna, I guess, make sure we're on the same page. I don't know that, and there may be a little bit of a mix-up, it's not that stop signs take a long time, it's... I don't know that, and there may be a little bit of a mix-up. It's not that stop signs take a long time, it's speeding enhancers would not. Stop signs take an ordinance. So it has to be, so it's, it's an ordinance, it's advertised, and it's voted on, so it's not an overnight thing, but it's not that they take.
Okay, but the thing is, this is the third time I've been here, so where are we?
Let me clarify, it's not just like come in and rubber stamp something and then move on. There has to be discussion and clarification. I, I've been out and, and also it takes a, a motion and a... So I don't have a vote either, I think I told you last time. It's a motion from the council and a three-fifths vote from the council in order to change where stop signs are and where stop signs aren't. So I'm doing my best to kind of explain like processes, and I wanna make sure I'm being as clear as I can be.
Okay, I understand, but again, it just seems like, and I hate to use the term, people are just dragging their feet. This is, this is just, this is an important thing. And, you know, people here are showing that. And I'm just, you know, I recently retired, so I see the traffic more and more all the time. And it is not slowing down. I mean, people just go back and forth. There's hundreds of cars on that road every single day. And we're just really, I know, I'm fed up with it. I'm fed up with trying, you know, standing out there and people slow down, or people give me the finger, or they just buzz right around me.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
And it's coming from the other neighborhood. It's not us. It's coming from down on Southwest. And they're cutting through our, our, our way to get out to twenty-seven and go over to Westminster. So where, what can we do? We need to speed this up a little bit, no pun intended.
I, I hear you. I, I understand your frustration. I'm a, anyone can speak that would like to speak on this?
Well, then, let's get some discussion going here.
And I agree. Uh, I've done some research on, on this. I drove out there. I've been out there probably ten times, um, since you were last in. It, it really is only people from, I think, Mindy. Maybe some from Southwestern, but then from what we call Manchester Farms, Section Six, I don't know if all the streets memorize.
Nevada, Hi-Gress, Coleman. I live on Nevada.
Yeah.
And we have the same problem on Nevada. I mean, it is a raceway.
But at least you have sidewalks.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, it is still, you know, kids still play, kids still whatever. We went through this two years ago. I don't know if you, you probably don't remember, cause obviously we're here. But we tried to get traffic calming in there and we had the same issue. And we never got traffic calming. I'm gonna be very honest with you. But I'm not saying that same thing for you. I'm just saying that it's unfortunately in every neighborhood, we're having the same complaint. And I mean, I, I wish I had an answer for you. I mean, we put, you know, yes, people should follow the speed limit. I get that. They don't. Um, I, I mean, if somebody has a, the thing that, what they think is right or what the answer should be, I'm willing to listen. I just don't know what the, what the right thing is to do, because I feel like we're gonna do one, then it's gonna be the next street, and the next street, and the next street. It's never gonna end. So are we gonna have traffic calming on every street in Manchester Farms, Mindy? You know what I mean? I mean, how are we gonna handle it? That's what I don't know.
I, I, I don't know.
Right.
But, and I could handle twenty-five or thirty miles an hour, but they're literally going forty and fifty down the street. I mean, I watch them every day.
When are they, I'm just asking, is there a certain time in particular?
It, it's, it's morning, a lot, coming home, and then there's, there's some in between. I mean, it's basically, it's all day. It's, there's no really law in it. Yeah, it's just... Yeah, it's just all the time. And someone is going to get hurt.
We have the same issue in Whispering Valley, and we don't have any sidewalks either. But, and we've stopped some of the traffic coming through on, in the mornings and the evenings where they can't make the turn into our neighborhood because we were getting hundreds of cars in the morning and the evening, but they still do the same thing. They still fly through. We have put extra stop signs in there and they just blow them. So, but according to the statistics, it's what, only five percent are...
The last time we did it, yes.
Speeding?
Yes.
So I, I, I agree with Melinda. It's like, I don't know where we go, because then it's gonna be every...
Is that the statistic from that little speed?
You have to use the mic. I'm sorry for recording purposes.
Is that, is that from the, from the...
To answer your question, yes. That's where that statistic comes from.
But again, they're there, they're there long enough. They're there, I think, they, like, like thirty days. So once people know they're there, then they're gonna slow down or they're gonna take an alternate route. And then when they're gone, they're right back to where they were. I mean, I can tell you it does.
I don't know that happens with the signs. We haven't seen that. Like, we've used the signs for a long time, the, and, and we're, we're gonna be deploying more different signs, like the one you see out here on, when everybody pulled in on, on York Street. So the capability is coming up to use more of those to display speed and then also capture data. What we've seen over, and, and Chief and Steve, you guys have looked at this as long as I have, and Dale, having the speed trailer there or capturing the sign doesn't really seem to affect much in terms of behavior.
No, it doesn't.
Having a police officer there does, but it's, it's, it's for a short time, right? Cause like, folks tend to know, I guess they use like, the really relentless speeders that are out there, right? Not like the five mile an hour people, but the people that are really going fast, I guess are using apps and things. It doesn't take long to figure out there's a police officer sitting someplace. But what that means is the data we're capturing using speed signs is fairly accurate. You know, if you knock out the really slow ones, they're the really fast ones. So I, I think we are seeing speeding, but we're seeing speeding to Councilwoman House's point. Virtually every street in town, this is the biggest concern.
Chief, question for you. And I know we can't tax the police on one street all the time. I get that. But here's my question. I mean, I know we're, we try to be very fair with the people that live in the neighborhoods, cause I do know there's some people in the neighborhood that have gotten pulled over, um, that actually live there. So if, if we're gonna start, if we, and, and tell me if I'm way off base, cause I might be. I don't, I don't know. Okay, I'm not trying to tax the police just on Mindy Drive, but just a thought. If we can go there for, I'm gonna say a couple weeks, every single day at rush hour, right? And instead of giving anybody warning, right, every single person a ticket, and I mean every one of them. I don't care if they live next door. I don't care if they live down the street. I don't care where they live. That might make a statement. And if we're gonna give everybody a ticket and forget about warnings, just start nailing every one of them. And then eventually, either they're gonna get it or they're not. But some of the people that are speeding and getting warnings, from my understanding, live there. So start giving them tickets. Put, give them a little peer pressure. I don't, I, I mean, that's a suggestion to me. I'll be honest with you.
Here's the issue, and this is being a hundred percent.
Okay.
So I live here too. I've been living here since nineteen ninety-three. Bottom line is, we're all in a small town. Your police department is equivalent to that town. It's a small police department. So you take a couple guys and you put them out on the street, and I say, I want you to direct your attention on Mindy Drive. And they go up there and they start running radar. Well, within minutes, they get a domestic call. They get an assault call. That same core of guys that I have on a traffic deployment, selective enforcement, they have to also handle those other calls. That other call could be five minutes, that other call could be two hours. And that's, that's the fact. It's not for a lack of trying. As you can see, none of these numbers that I'm giving are embellished at all, at all. They have turned up the heat on traffic enforcement. They've, that's where the DUIs are coming from. That's where subjects are getting, getting arrested. But they're here, they're here, they're trying to handle Alley. They try to handle Charmel. They try to handle Main Street. They try to handle Southwestern. They try to handle Suzanne and Mindy. It's a lot. And, and it's, and there are other solutions. And I, and I can tell you, there is no one sitting on this side of the room that does not care and having tried to figure this out to include thinking about deploying, and I'm gonna say it, I'm probably gonna get hammered, but the whole traffic enforcement by photo. We thought about it.
We did.
I mean, we thought about it. There's technology out there. There's cameras that I can attach to those exist, existing signs right now that work in that same fashion, because it is a problem. Pennsylvania has grown by leaps and bounds, and we are basically an informal bypass. I've seen the cars come through, they get traffic citations. Manchester's growing, Hampstead's growing. There's a lot. It's starting to get overwhelming. I'll be honest with you. But we're gonna stay on top of it. We're definitely gonna play our role. And I'm not gonna use words like zero tolerance or whatever have you, but we have turned up the heat. And we're gonna continue to turn up the heat. But it's not an easy task. There are calming solutions that we have to think about, and we have all thought about them. Speed bumps, there's pros and cons. Stop signs, I'll give you an example. We put a stop sign where you're talking about. The next thing you'll have, it'll work for that small strip, but then the strip that goes from A to B going towards twenty-seven will be a drag strip. And that's what happens. So we can do it. I mean, it can be done. I'm not throwing the idea out. It gives us another tool for a stop sign violation. But i- it, it's, it's everywhere. And it's not just in Manchester. It's in Hampstead. Carroll County Sheriff's Office has the same problem. And Carroll County is a small law enforcement. It's a small law enforcement. And we're trying to stay on top of it. But, and the only reason I'm telling you this, I don't want you to think that we don't care, cause we do care. I care. I got grandkids growing up in this town. I do care. I just dealt with the situation on Westminster and Park. Same type of, same type of problem. And we did get, we did get one of the big offenders there. So we do care, Mr. Kirk. Trust me. And we are trying to figure that out.
I mean, this is my third time here, and it's just, has, has this been tabled by the council as far as what I brought up?
Nothing's officially tabled, I, or...
However, whatever you have to do.
The, the chief said it pretty well, is that the way this, this board works, I don't mean me, I mean sort of like the entire thing, is that somebody has, reaches a certain level of frustration and comes in and says, this is what we're, I think works for me right now, therefore do it right now. It's just, I think the, the chief said it really well. I mean, we, everybody here either has or has had children or grandchildren growing up in these communities, in streets. Um, I don't believe the chief has sidewalks. I don't have sidewalks. Dale doesn't have sidewalks. Deb doesn't have sidewalks.
Now, but I didn't before.
You didn't, yeah. Um, we've all dealt with these same things, and what we've found with our collective experience is we have not been able to use barriers to work our way out of this situation. That, you know, barriers on a short run, I mean, maybe we can, okay, maybe this fifty, fifty yards looks better than it did before. But the average time for a car to go to A, A to B hasn't changed. So what does that mean? Means the average car coming through here, or, or the most dangerous car now rolls through this stop sign and then hits the gas, and they're, and they're effectively going faster between points B and C than they were before. So then everybody else is now in worse shape. And we can't put one of these things in front of every single house. It just doesn't, doesn't work.
And that's why I, you know, I, I think, you know, I, I feel that those risers at strategic spots further up will then, they'll have to, I mean, cause they'll know they're there and they'll have to slow down. And that'll take them up to the next stop sign, and then they're onto Burt Fowler.
It, it, it's a possibility. The other possibility is they go faster, hit the brakes, go faster.
I just don't think they would. I, I, I just, I mean, they're in my son's neighborhood. And I, you know, I, I, I've over there a lot and I see these cars, and they just, I mean, they're, they slow down. I mean, they know they're there and they slow down. They don't wanna have any damage to the cars.
Where's your son live?
West Timonium Road.
I think we know that speed bumps work, or it damages a car, and also can damage a snowplow. Now, a speed hump or a riser, do we know how effective they can be? Because I see cars fly over those, and it would take ten humps to slow people.
Well, I, I've seen it and I've seen them.
So I don't know how effective they are.
Slow, I, I feel they're effective, and I feel that we need to try something because we're not, we're not getting anywhere and the problem's not going away. So I just would really like to see something done.
I said, I don't know if it was the last time you were here or the time before, I personally don't believe a stop sign is the answer.
Well...
With that being said, because I live on Southwestern at Mindy, they don't stop at that stop sign.
Oh, I know.
That's a suggestion.
Yeah.
It's a suggestion.
If we even slow down to make the turn. So I personally don't believe that that is the answer. If we were to go the speed hump route. Right, right there.
I, I, I was just, I'm slower than you.
Yeah, it's all right. Um, if we were to go the speed hump route, that's not something we have budgeted for this year. That would have to be something we would budget for next year. Like, cost-wise, is that something that we would be able to, to cover in this year's budget? Or is it something that we'd have to do, consider in the next fiscal year budget?
The next fiscal year budget, yes. And if you would like to see a speed hump, we have one on Westminster Street. We had two on Westminster Street. They were removed. The cars fly over the speed hump. It does not slow them down.
It doesn't, and it's up a hill, so it really doesn't do much.
It has no effect. Uh, we actually, when we redid the street, we actually removed one of them.
How much are the cameras?
Are they... Well, I, I would have to re-investigate that. We would have to look into the company and the best company that's doing it.
I mean, I, I know how the cameras work and I've never been a fan of them, but, and we also know that when you do traffic enforcement, most of the tickets go to the people that live there. And that's, that's proven, but that seems like a good...
Well, I, that's, that's the other frustrating thing. We're kinda like working against each other.
Right.
Cause you're all in here, but there's a good portion out there, our own neighbors, our community, they're the ones that are the offenders. They're teenagers. And it's, if we could get them on board, maybe, I mean, we get the small portion, but, and I can't tag Pennsylvania because I can tell you when I'm in my personal vehicle, it frustrates me. I'll see Jimmy Jones blow right through the stop sign, but then when we're out there in a police vehicle, then they stop for the stop sign. It gets frustrating, but it's our own, it's our own residence.
Chief, you have had officers out in town vehicles that were not police vehicles, correct?
Yes.
Did they notice anything? Was there, did that deter people? My fear is that...
I mean, we caught people, but it's the same thing as, soon as they know the officer's gone, they go back to their old habits.
My fear is, or one of my hesitations is that I feel like the people that will follow the rule or the stop sign or the speed hump or respect whatever we put in place, is gonna be the population of people who are already doing it. That it's not, we're not able to figure out the best way to catch the people who are our offenders. They're gonna keep doing it. The people who stop at the stop signs now are the ones who are gonna stop at a stop sign.
We've caught some recidivists. We've captured some recidivists. There are some people that had some pretty hefty fines.
Okay.
Those, those streets aren't lined either, are they?
Mindy, no.
No.
So I, I, you know, sometimes that can be used, aligning the streets, you know, with...
Of visual, right.
Right, can, can be a traffic calming thing. So that may be something, you know, that we'll try also.
Right, that's one of the options, striping on the streets to give the illusion of a narrowing street.
Yeah, I've heard that too. That's statistically, that does see help.
And we've thought about the rumble, what do they call it, rumble, rumble. But then you get, Mindy's a quiet neighborhood.
It's quiet, but what was the count on the street for that month? Wasn't it like...
It was high. Oh, oh, yeah, it was mine, by the way.
Yeah.
No, I can't deny that. It was, it was a high number.
No question, it's a minor bypass. I mean, it, you know, to avoid the Manchester, you know, whatever. I mean, there's no, I mean, I have people, when I'm going home and I stop at the stop sign at Mindy and Southwestern, I have people pass me. I have had somebody pass me at the stop sign to go around me to cut down Mindy. I'm like, are you kidding me? You know, but I mean, that's how brazen people are.
Yeah, we, we get it too, and they'll, they'll drive on people's yards to go around you. Yes.
So your, your neighborhood's a little bit different, I think, than this one in that I don't know if the count is gonna go down a whole lot on Mindy. Only because if you look at it, it's only people on Mindy or people in Manchester Farms or people visiting either one of those places. Cause there's no place else to go. Like, other than, other than somebody that's in the town, like me or the police or something, just driving it. What's, no one's gonna just go speed around the neighborhood that doesn't live there or is visiting there.
Well, could we, could we...
No.
A shorter route in some respects to, let's say, to avoid going to town the opposite direction. They come through that to go, let's say, to Walmart, to go back to, to thirty, back to, you know, to...
Uh, so somebody from like down Burt Fowler or something? Yeah, maybe.
Still, that's a lot of cars, six thousand.
It is, and, and I don't think those people would account for that six thousand.
I mean, I had no idea. I lived just a few houses from the center of Southwestern and Mindy, and it is a rolling stop. You're an exception if you make a stop at that stop sign, because the majority of the people don't, they just, they don't even stop at Walmart. They just, you know...
I think if you counted...
I call it a suggestion.
We were looking at this. If you counted all the houses on Mindy, uh...
Temporary speed bumps. They make those rubberized plastic.
Yeah, we, we were, that, it's, it's still an option. Yeah, it's still, it's an, it's an option.
I think we checked into that too. Didn't you check into that, Steve, the rubberized...
We had samples here.
I have samples.
We had samples here.
We have samples.
Now, the thing with those is they get spiked in.
Yep.
And in the fall of the year, we would have to remove them, fill in the holes so our plows don't peel them up and so the water doesn't get into the holes and the blacktop splits and so on and so forth. So there's, there's labor involved in that, you know, so...
What do you put a plate in?
A plate?
A plate in the street that you can bolt into?
We still have to remove the bolts. I mean, we still have to get it out. We'd peel, I, I'm afraid the snowplow, we'd pick it up and peel it right off. There's no doubt about it. I mean, they hug, you know, so...
Well, until we can put some of this stuff in the budget, could we, is there enough money to like do some lining on the streets? At least start a traffic calming...
Is it wide enough?
I'd have to, uh, when we talk about lining, you're, you're talking about just two white lines on these...
On the side, in a center line if we have to.
The county does our striping for us, so we could get a price from the county and see how much they would charge to do that.
Basically cutting it down the middle, maybe?
Uh, I don't...
No?
I don't know. We'd have to, Chief and I'd have to look at that, see what width we would have.
Make sure we can.
Yeah.
It would at least be a start for the, if we can't do a... It would at least be a start for the, um, if we can't do a hump or, uh, the camera yet, it would at least be a start. And as much traffic enforcement as we can.
So, right now, I mean, you would like to see, uh, Mindy from, uh, oh my goodness, Bird Fowler to Southwestern striped.
Yeah, Southwestern.
That's what I would like to see. Anybody else?
Can we price it out as two separate, instead of one whole thing? The, from, uh, as Patricia, where the proposed stop sign would be? Get them to price out what it would be as two and combine it.
What do you mean? You lost.
So, okay, you know, if we did from Southwestern to Patricia, price the whole thing, but have that cutting point that we would know this stretch would cost this much, this would cost this much.
We can probably do that.
That's only four hundred ninety-eight feet, right?
Yeah, it's not that much difference. It's four hundred feet.
Right, like five hundred, just to kind of get an idea.
Yeah, we talked about striping.
Yeah, I mean.
What's that going to do?
That's five hundred.
Well, striping sometimes gives you the illusion that the street is more narrow. And, and it's, it slows the traffic down, you know.
Yeah, it affects the psychology of drivers. It, the, the good thing about that is it affects most people and the, the bad thing is it doesn't affect the worst ones.
You're gonna, right, you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose sixteen inches. I mean, the white stripes are eight inches wide. And then if you do double yellow going up to center, you're gonna lose another sixteen, probably twenty inches, so.
Okay.
I, I just want to say, Mr. Kirk, you mentioned earlier about dragging our feet. Please believe we are not dragging our feet. Anything we do, any money we spend to fix Mindy is, is paid for by all the taxpayers in the town. So, we just want to make sure whatever we're doing is the right thing. That's all. We're not dragging our feet.
Yeah, it just, I just feel like I've been up here a lot and just we're like nowhere. So, I'm just concerned for everybody on the street and especially the kids because school's in session and they're not slowing down. They're, they're just not. So, thank you.
All right, you guys mind, I know you've been here before. Do you mind stating your names so that we-
Yeah, Speed Jones, two five nine three Mindy.
Okay.
Thomas Chetlet, two five nine five Mindy.
Okay.
So, just hearing all the options, so going back to the camera thing, what, what's the, so that would be a photo enforced camera, it's like, so I'm on six ninety-five, there's a work zone, you have a camera there. So, that is something that we can actually do?
Same concept. I think the law states that it has to be one point five miles bird's eye of a school. Which, we have three schools. That pretty much covers the whole town.
And then, to me, you know, hearing the speed humps and the, and the risers and all that stuff doesn't work. So, wouldn't that money generate more money for the town? So, for every ticket you would give, does that money come back to the town itself?
So, usually the speed enforcement by photo, the revenue comes to the town. As we do it now, it actually costs the town because the officers have to go to court. We get zero dollar back from the-
Your moving values just go to the state.
Yeah.
Okay, so anything that's done with that picture camera really is not really helping the town itself. So, it wouldn't pay for itself to have that camera put in place.
And that the picture is going to the town, correct?
I think he said the pictures would.
The picture does go to the town.
I think what happens is the processor gets X percentage. We looked at it once before. We just looked at it forever. Who's listening in TV. There's a percentage. The processor gets a percentage, the town gets a percentage.
It just, again, I've been there not as long as Tom, but twenty-three years and it's, and again, no offense to Nevada and those towns down there, it just seems like it's, it's only gotten that way since the new development's been there. Obviously, more people coming and going, so.
Right, there's more people traveling there.
The best way, I'm just listing all the options, it's gotta be that. Or you gotta give everybody a ticket, because if you just, I heard your report earlier, all the citations, I guess, were the warnings. I don't know how many actuals-
It's a hundred eighty-nine.
How many actual speeding tickets were actually given?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Hundred eighty-one warnings.
Any in that, I mean, this is all-
Yeah, there was definitely many, we, we used, uh, we had to use some vehicles from the town to, they actually did covert work up there to run radar.
Okay, yeah, I saw.
Because you got, you got police cars, we're getting, you saw.
And again, I'm going to go back and I don't know the numbers. Like, we keep talking about it's people, you know, in the neighborhood that are speeding. I mean, I'm sure it is, but, you know, you gotta say, not us. I mean, there's probably a small percentage of those people that are, you know, running late for work or whatever, that situation maybe. And I guess the other percentage is anybody cutting through. But I'm just sitting here listening to it. It sounds like the camera thing would be the best way to go because you're not impeding the ground, right? You don't have, last time we were even talking about, uh, emergency equipment kind of coming and going, so, um, so I, if that works, it works. I mean, and, and I didn't know if that money would generate, you know, it would kind of pay for itself.
And, and one of the biggest things that turned us off, I forgot who was on the board, I know most of them were. I think the camera almost established a quota which we did not like.
Yeah, they're-
If you didn't reach X ticket.
Yeah.
Then there was some type of, which we, because I, we don't have a-
We had to pay out of pocket.
Oh, you do.
Well, because like, like we don't own the technology, we don't own like the, the thing where like they're taking the picture, they're analyzing, sending it out and they're collecting it. So, we had to have so many of them in order to pay for the, I said we didn't.
Can you have a camera and it says photo enforced and then just not really let it work?
Probably, I don't know, I don't know.
But if we're going to do that, we may as well do the tickets. I mean-
Well, I, yeah, I just, I just, this is my opinion. I mean, stop signs are going to do only so much. Speed bumps are only going to do so much.
There's some other technology out there that I would like to look at.
It just doesn't sound like we're really going to come to any kind of, you know, solution here because it, everybody's, everybody's, everybody's neighborhoods are probably the same as what ours is, but we just have more people coming and complaining about it, so.
It's frustrating. Right, it's frustrating.
So, you can imagine the folks that live on Charmel.
Yeah.
Right, so Charmel, Southwestern didn't exist. Mindy did, but you couldn't go out that way.
Yeah.
Um, but everything in Manchester Farms didn't exist and a lot of those folks have been living there for a long time.
Yeah.
So, they have a lot of the same frustration. Their road's thirty feet wide, you know, people, you know, go, whatever number you want to say, that's how fast they've gone on Charmel. So, I, the chief and I have been talking some and, and I kind of agree with him in that I've been doing this a long time. We've never been successful in creating barriers or stop signs or anything to solve a problem. It's, it's pushed it here or there, or it's funneled it on, onto somebody else, or it's stopped it at this point, but fifty yards down the road, it's now worse or just as bad. So, what, what are we really accomplishing? Is that as technology continues to evolve, whether it's can, these, this existing camera thing you're talking about or something else, there, there has to be a way for us to be better at this without, wi- without, you know, doing the-
I, I'm trying to think. I, I, I travel. I'm in Seattle, so I'm from Philly to Scranton to, I mean, I'm all over and I just don't know, you know, what you can do to really stop it. I, I mean, we can do all those things we just said and somehow, some way, it's just going to eventually go, I mean, I have signs out. Um, you know, please slow down signs, but what it is, it's, it's, they were up for a month and then after a month, it's just, it's just like the speed thing. It's just numb, you know, they just go by, so.
This is not funny, but somebody on our street put up the little kid things that say slow and then they put up cones. Well, one of the neighbors got so mad that they got into a fight with the guy that put the cones up because he, the neighborhood all the time. So, it's, believe me when I tell you, it's everywhere. I mean, it was, then I had people banging on my door saying, what are you going to do? You know, I'm like, wow, you know.
There, I'm not, I'm not on Facebook, but I'm just saying this because I know some people are. There is a site for Manchester and I don't know how many people are involved in this thing and it's involved in all the neighborhoods.
Oh, I saw it today.
There's some really stuff, yeah, I saw it too. My wife saw it. There's some stuff going on and, and again, going back to the police side, it could get, it could get beyond, you know, it could get personal. You know, just reading some of that stuff on there, so. People are getting upset about it, so I just hope it doesn't become something more.
And we're dealing with that in virtually every neighborhood. People are videotaping each other and posting it and that's like someone's fifteen or sixteen year old son.
Well, I like the thing that we're different than all them just because we're here, right?
Right, right.
I mean, we're, I mean, I don't know how many people from Charmel showed up or how many people from other neighborhoods.
It's, it's been one or the other. Yeah, they, it, it come in cycles, yeah. Wh- which is fine. It's, which is completely fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, but people tend to kind of, you know, be focused on what's around them and, but we're dealing with this, yeah, everywhere.
Can we, and I know you've probably done this and I can't remember, can we, and I don't, I'm not trying to push this off or whatever, I'm just asking, making a suggestion. Can we check about that camera that does speeding tickets? See what it would cost? Can we buy one and try it on Mindy? And if it seems to really work, we'll, and they're not that expensive, I don't have a problem putting one on Nevada or put, what'd you say?
We're going to have to see what-
I mean, it's something we can try. I can investigate and get some options.
We're going to have to figure out what the laws are and how we would participate in something.
Right. Because if we get it, right, if we get it and it doesn't meet the criteria, we can't leave it there. It's, unfortunately, it'll have to be moved and it's going to have to go somewhere else like Charmel or somebody that's, you know, because if, if we're, it's going to cost us money because we find out that, oh, it only gave five tickets out. Oh, no, that's not good. You know what I mean? I mean, I'm willing to do whatever we can do.
But isn't that what it's supposed to do though? It's supposed to be there and you're supposed to, people are supposed to see it and they're supposed to get a ticket if they, whatever the citation is.
Right.
And eventually they gotta say, okay, I can't go fast.
Well, one would think.
Yeah, and then eventually you would go, let's say you go from a hundred tickets to like, you know, whatever, ten, fifteen tickets, right? So, you have this random people coming through and then all of a sudden it's like, it's not a problem anymore. Then you remove, you remove the technology and go, okay, well, everything's good. And then-
Or maybe we don't, right?
Yeah, six, seven, ten months later, you're doing the same thing.
Or maybe, right, or maybe we don't and, you know, whatever.
I think the goal of the money, right? It, it probably wouldn't be a huge revenue source and it would be probably inappropriate for it to be that if that's was the, the driving force behind it. Because then the, the incentive would be, we'll put everything at five miles an hour.
And we're just constantly finding everybody. You, you don't want to do that. But at the same time, you, you, we don't, we don't want this to be a huge drain, but if you put a speed bump, there's speed bumps not paying for itself.
Right, so like, a, a little bit of money.
Right.
Right, a, a, a little bit of money for gain safety isn't necessarily, so it's not a completely financial decision.
We did talk about the photo cameras once and people were up in an uproar.
That's like, it has to be kind of put out there.
It's, believe me, it's, like, six and one, they did not want it.
Did not want it.
No, six and one, half dozen and the other. So, it's like, you know, you just kind of have to, that's why when, you know, I know you think we're sitting around not trying to figure it out, but believe me, we're trying to figure out a way because somebody's not going to be happy no matter what we do.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Somebody's going to be-
I think a, all of our feelings in those things evolve over time.
Yeah.
So, twenty years ago, if you'd said like, hey, we're going to put a device out there, it's going to keep track of your license plate when you drive by it, people lose their minds. Nowadays, you say like, hey, you're going to spend a thousand dollars and pay fifty bucks a month to put a government tracker in your pocket. And you're just like, well, what model is it? Because I don't, you know, I can't wait to get the iPhone eleven. So, at, at people's, you know, they change over time. People seem to be less opposed to that sort of technology than they used to be.
Because it's around a lot more. I mean, look, I, I'll tell you the truth. I'm an insurance agent. That's my real job. And, well, I shouldn't say my real job. That's my full-time job. Maybe that's the wrong thing to say, my full-time job. Um, and I will tell you, I have several customers that have over two dozens of speeding camera tickets. Now, there's slow learners, okay? But if they want to do that and keep getting the speeding tickets, eventually they're suspended because they didn't pay them. But I mean, that's what's going to happen and it, it is what it is.
Yeah, I travel a lot and I see a lot of stuff. The thing about that is mostly just citations, not points.
Right.
So, once you start really hitting it hard, and, and again, you can't change the law just for Mindy drive, I get it, but to me, that's
No, I know. I follow you.
the end all be all. Like, you almost have to make it really, you know.
Right.
And the law only goes so far.
Okay.
Chief, if you can look at some options.
I just trust, we want to do what's right. Like she's, the council person said, if we get speed cameras, there'll be more people in here than you have in here tonight times ten.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know if you've ever noticed, at the square, there's little cameras and all they are is just for motion. When they, when people thought they were stoplight cameras, Steve's phone rang and Chief's phone rang off the hook. Because they thought they were the, um, red light cameras.
They were doing red light.
Mm-hmm.
Red light. And then really all they were is the motion for the sense of depth.
I mean, but if you stop, I mean, I just don't see the problem.
I mean, don't, just don't think we're avoiding it. We're, we're, we're just trying to figure out what the best thing is to-
I'm not avoiding it.
Yeah, this, this, the speed cameras traditionally have always benefited the, the speed camera company. It used to be a fifty-fifty split. And I'm not sure what it is now, but my suggestion is we go ahead or see if we can go ahead with the, the striping to, to start and have the chief check into the speed camera. Put one up there and catch those suckers.
And then we'll regroup and see where we are. I mean, that's the best we can really do.
Let's check into what the current contracts look like and what the current laws look like.
See after, right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll have some more answers, I mean.
Do you have our, our to-dos on that?
So, with the striping to start, like Mrs. Howe had said, um, what would be the chances that maybe we could get a few signs? The signs that say slow kids at play and they're, they're, um,
Solar.
Solar.
Solar with the light flashing.
Light up around the outside. What would be the chances that maybe we could get maybe one or two of those on Mindy?
We can take a look and see if, if we have those. I don't know that we have any in town right now.
Now, see, we can't put signs up that say slow children at play because that tells the kids they can play in the street.
Or just slow children, please, like, something towards that means.
That's a law. That's a law. But something, you know, like something we can come up, we don't have any right now. We don't have anything out there.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have any.
Yeah, because what, what I have noticed, I mean, I've been here like a month and a half. Yeah. Well, Mr. Smith is new here too.
Right, yeah.
Sitting over here in the back, he's new here as well. And our kids play back and forth, you know, and it's, they hit the corner and I mean, it's-
You're at that first corner coming off of Bird Fowler.
You're the, so you're the straightaway, they're ready to roll, right?
I yelled at a car personally today and the dude looked straight at me and then, straight on, like it didn't-
Yeah. And he probably looks a hundred yards behind you, by the way.
Probably. Yeah, probably. I mean, but, just, just a suggestion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, at least they wave because I've got a border.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? We'll add, um, the, the kinds of signs that we, we could put in.
Add that one there to check the signs.
And, and if, and if it works, like, uh, we went through the same thing at Hallie and, and with the Spring Valley.
Even just maybe one, even just above our two houses where the corner is right there. Because there's also a young child that lives above our corner where it kind of bends around.
Yeah.
There's a four-year-old child that lives right there as well and he plays with our kids from time to time.
The, the issues with signs, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm going to, because I've advocated for these things a number of times and then we have, we have to move on, but signs work, again, for like a month. So, if you think of like, you think of like, in front of Cape Horn, you probably travel thirty. There's a big sheet sign, a big billboard. And if you ask a hundred people what's on that sheet's billboard, maybe one of them can tell you. Because it, it just, you know, you see, once you see it a hundred times.
It's just a literal racetrack and I worry for my kids.
I, I get it. We're, we're all on board with that part of it.
Yeah.
It's a literal racetrack.
Yeah, we're, we're all on board with that part.
Let us do some, let us do some more.
Sir, before you sit down, I, I got Mr. Jones's name, but I need your name for-
Uh, Thomas Chetlet, C-H-E-T-E-L-A-T, two five nine five Mindy.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody, um, else non-Mindy? I know we asked that beforehand. All right, okay, none, we'll move on. To committee reports, Councilwoman Smith.
I have a meeting on Thursday, so that'll be my report, yeah, next month.
Okay, Councilwoman Miller.
Um, a couple of things. The, um, designer bag bingo that we did jointly between, um, the fire department and Haley's Wish, had twenty-nine people. Um, the people that were there seemed to really enjoy it. Uh, we raised a decent amount of money, um, for both organizations. Uh, the final numbers are not back. We're finishing the total, but it was over six thousand dollars that was raised in that one evening, um, from that event. Next Thursday, I believe it's next Thursday, the nineteenth is the first quarterly MML meeting. We have somebody going for that to keep us in the running for Banner City. And we have to make sure we send someone to fall conference.
I'm going.
You're going. I thought you were councilperson now, but I wanted to make sure, um, so that we have that and that keeps us in the running for Banner City.
Good. Councilman Machelli.
The next MML meeting is September nineteenth at noon at Dutch Corner. No other updates.
Councilwoman Howe.
We have a few, um, things that are going on at the nature center. First, on October the twelfth, the, uh, nature center is going to participate, have a booth at the, um, Harvest Festival from the Happenings in Manchester.
Fall Fest Park, yeah.
Yes, and, um, it's, but it'll be at the carnival grounds and they're going to have a booth where the kids can come decorate pumpkins. On October the thirteenth, from one to three, is the Give a Gift to Nature, the tree planting. If anyone still wants to, uh, donate to plant a tree in memory or in honor of someone, you can get some forms in the town office or at the nature center. October twenty-sixth is the family campout. Uh, we had a successful one in July and it starts at five P M. and ends at eleven A M. the next day. You can spend the night or not spend the night. It's thirty dollars. And last, on November the second, we're going to have a re-market flea market. Uh, the location and time is going to be announced later because we're worried about bad weather. Uh, if anyone's interested, we're still looking for anyone to, for vendors to rent a table for twenty-five dollars. You can get all this information on the nature center's website.
Good. Councilman Walter.
Uh, nothing new to report with planning and zoning, other than what Steve had mentioned earlier that we have an upcoming workshop on the annexation of the Lippi property. Hopefully, everybody can make that. See if that's going to be here and, we'll set it up. Be a lot of, be a lot of people.
Yes.
Yep. That's correct. Good. That's it.
Nice. School's back in. Trent?
Nice. School's back in. Trent?
Yes, it is. And not ecstatic about having to get up before seven, five days a week. But only a hundred and seventy-four more days to go. And.
Go out there, gotta go for it.
Done before we know it. And, um, so the stampede was last Wednesday, which began the school year and the fall sports season. Which includes the football team, which won their first game against Williamsport with a score of twenty-one to nine this past Friday. As for fine arts, auditions for their senior directed one acts with the theme being the Twilight Zone have been held. And the cast was selected for the International Thespian Society show Twelve Angry Jurors. Which the plot is that a nineteen-year-old kid has been accused of murder in a case which gets more and more confusing as it's discussed more and more. And for the football shows, you have the marching band and the theme for this show this year is Michael Jackson, so with songs like Bad, Thriller and Black or White. Uh, homecoming is early this year, being around the end of the month on the twenty-seventh of September for the game. And the Saturday after the twenty-eighth is the homecoming dance. And spear week will be throughout that week with your standard, America Monday, Neon Pyjama and certain themes. Uh, Mr. Guerra has returned as the principal of the school after being assistant principal last year and different positions years before. And new to this year, the classes with the freshmen, the sophomores, juniors and seniors are trying out a new method of fundraising. We are having fundraiser restaurant nights, different places throughout the year, about once a month. With the first one being at the Westminster Chipotle on September thirtieth. And a pu- and the money made from the nights is divided evenly abo- among the four classes. And each of the classes has a couple of them that they are in charge of and they're gonna be throughout the entire school year. So if anyone would want to help out our classes, there'll be specific passes to show that you are coming to support the class versus just coming into the restaurant normally, cause they, certain places don't want us just standing outside handing out, here, support our class, for some reason. And so for most months, I could bring them in just to support, but for Chipotle this month, they have their own posters that they give out and they haven't given them out yet, so it's a few more months. But if anyone would like to help out, I could email them to you and that would be very much appreciated if you could help us out for all the classes.
I have a question. Who you guys playing for homecoming?
Just gonna ask that same question.
The theme?[1743.44]